This workshop session and I would ask.
Clark, this call.
Adams, here. Bartlett, here. Cook, here. Hopkins, Codenell.
Yes, here.
Scott, Wonka, here. Formoski, here. Aaron Williams, twenty-one.
Here.
First item, that is going to be delayed until August the twelfth, the Jacksonville Promise Discussion, so in that state. Just, just for the new aldermen, back, little bit of background on the, and I, you can, you know, read it in the past minutes, but last year, they presented and we, the council chose to give them a thousand dollars for the Jacksonville Promise. They believe they're gonna, they want another presentation. They have a speaker, I believe, coming from Western Illinois to talk about the advantages of the promise, and I believe their, this year's gonna be ten thousand. Now, we haven't budgeted ten thousand. We budgeted, we got a thousand, and since they were, they were gonna ask again for a thousand, but we have not budgeted ten thousand this year. It's not to say we can't change the budget, but they, they will be here August the twelfth, and they'll present the promise. If you have any questions before then, my contact and many of you probably spoken with him is Dr. Chuck Chee, and he would, he'll be happy to talk to you. Outside of that, community reports tonight. Parks and Lakes, Mr. Hall, Mr. Fletcher, Mr. Gilbert. You guys are out? Lori?
No.
So we have two exciting things tonight to share with the council, have recently just come to our attention in the last seven to ten days. So the first item is discuss a grant for the only department of natural resources for a granite, nickel pool. And we do have Greg Hillis here to talk to us a little bit more about it. Well, we really wanted to focus on nickel pool because this is something that's been on our radar for three to five years, and we've been talking about it. We've been, you know, we've discussed Parks and Lakes, and this is a great opportunity. Grant is, the reason we didn't bring it to Parks and Lakes first is because it came up so quickly, and the grant applications actually due on August the nineteenth. So, we're gonna hear a little bit more tonight from Greg, but I think it's an amazing opportunity for the city of Jacksonville to, it's up to four hundred thousand dollars for our part, so it's a fifty-fifty grant. So, four hundred thousand dollars if we got it, potentially could come from the state of Illinois, and the other four hundred thousand dollars could come from us over two years. So, I'll let Greg tell you a little bit more about the grant. But again, I, one last thing I wanna say is, I have talked to everyone on the Parks and Lakes Committee, and all of them except for one has been in favor unanimously, unanimously, to move forward tonight with the grant applications.
Lori, can I interrupt?
Yes.
The, the one thing about this that's, that's really a good factor is we don't get many opportunities to put money into things like pools. You know, it seems like there's, there's money floating around for a lot of other things, but this came up so quick, and when we were notified about the grant possibility, there's actually two floating around, we'll explain the other one in a minute, but this is an opportunity to get fifty percent money for the improvements that we'd like to do. You know, we've been talking, you know, with a consultant and everything in the past, and, and it's always nice to talk about improvements, but there's never any money to go along with it. This time, we've got an opportunity to get fifty percent money, and we could go up, you know, it's, it's a, a pretty, the grant has quite a bit of money in it. There's some good possibilities that, that we might get funded. We've certainly got our fingers crossed. So many of the grants just have like a million dollars in them, and to be distributed across the state. This is twenty-nine million to be funded throughout the state, so there's a good possibility we might get some money for the pool if we can get your support tonight. All we're looking for is the okay to move forward. We give the okay to Greg to move forward tonight, then he'll come back in two weeks with numbers for you. Exact numbers, exact layout of what we'd like to do, and, and that type of thing. But, he's gotta know something tonight, or he doesn't have time by the nineteenth to get the grant put together. So, in, in both regards, this one and the next one, we'll talk about, this is an opportunity for money, and we hate to pass that by.
Would this be a, could use some gambling funds?
Yeah.
Absolutely. You know, it's, it's supposed to be set aside for projects, right?
Right.
And, and I think this is an excellent project to use the, the funds for, because opportunities to get funding for something like this just don't come along all the time. Thank you, Greg.
Oh, that's okay. He covered quite a bit of it there for me, Kelly. Appreciate it. And, it's Greg Hillis with Benton and Associates, so I'm sorry to, but it's Benton and Associates that would be putting in the grant for you. Just to kinda give you an overview, a little bit more points, it is due, like they're saying, August the nineteenth. Award wouldn't be six to eight months from that date. So, you do have a little bit of time there to try to, if you start budgeting things. The other thing is, if you make the first cut, there is a three-minute presentation that, that is mandatory, that has to be done at the IDNR building, and it's best if you, people show up from the city to give that presentation. It, it looks better because of public input. This is the same thing like your, the, the walking path that we did, the bike path, or excuse me, not the bike path, the walking path trail that we did, put in for Lake Jacksonville, which we haven't heard about, but you had great public involvement with that. This also needs public involvement, and you did a very good job with that. The grant is fifty-fifty up to four hundred thousand dollars of there. So, if the project is eight hundred thousand dollars, that means you're maxing it out, four hundred grand, and four hundred out of your pocket. Anything above that comes out of your pocket and no more match. I just wanna make sure that, that's clear, okay? Other than that, Kelly and Lori has covered pretty much the rest of it. If there's any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer those. Yes, this is a pretty intense application. It's not online. There's a lot of paperwork involved with it, and Kelly's right, it, I think it's a great opportunity because they're saying there's twenty-nine million dollars in for this grant. Last year, there was twenty-nine million dollars also. Thirty-five million dollars was requested, and we were lucky, last year we put in for three grants, and we did get all three grants funded last year for other communities. So, we feel like we can put a good application together for you if we have time.
We would be looking at putting it in a totally new spot and finding that, and the park owners would be looking at closing down the pool and redoing that space there for this.
Do you wanna take this, or?
Well, I think, you know, we discussed, last year even, you know, the relocation and all of that, and it was voted to stay there. So, what we're looking at basically are necessary plumbing improvements and things that, that aren't fun and pretty, but you gotta do them, you know. So, those are the things we're looking at for, for some of the money. And, and then other things are improvements that he'll discuss in two weeks in more detail, but I think they'll be nice for the public. There's some things that we've talked about, such as zero entry, you know, for the pool, and some things of that nature.
Does this include the bathhouse?
Yes. It does include restructuring the bathhouse to make it more family friendly, as, as we've discussed in the past. This is included in that as well.
Any other questions for Greg or Kelly? Steve?
I'd just like to go back in history a little bit on this whole project. The whole idea of working on a pool kinda started back when Burbak Aquatics approached the city in twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen. They've been trying to do a pool study to try and get us some plans for the future. I don't know if any of you have seen Beers Town or Rushville, they have new aquatic centers. They, a, a pool designed to recall our current pool, a box with water, and an aquatic center with more play areas and stuff like that is more engaging for, for young people. So, we had a, designed a pool study, and we had Waters Edge Aquatics out of Kansas City came, and there's another person, Jamie Cosgriff, he's an architect who lives in town. He works for Brandon Hyde, and they teamed up with Councilman Hunstucker to do the pool in Beers Town. So, that was some, kinda the plans to do the, a, a pool study. Waters Edge Aquatics did the pool study for us, and they did a preliminary study. We paid them half of the ten thousand dollars that we contracted them to do. One thing I see with this whole process is that I'm just sad for Waters Edge Aquatics, that they're not being included with this project going forward. They did some good initial plans for us, and we only paid them half of what we said we were gonna give them. We kinda held back on the second half of what we said we were gonna pay them, the, the next five thousand dollars, because they were supposed to do a public input study. But they also had done some core sampling for us to show that our pool is worth fixing, and they said it was worth fixing. So I think if we do this going forward, we need to pay Waters Edge Aquatics their five thousand dollars, and confirm that they did a really good job for us. So, I, I just wish that they were being included with these plans going forward.
Anyone else? The, the second item we have is discuss boat access development grants in the Illinois Department of Natural Resources, and I'll just go ahead and turn it over to Kelly. This is another great opportunity for us, and I won't steal your thunder, but it's a hundred percent money. So, that's a lot easier. So, but I'll turn it over to Kelly.
It is. It's a hundred percent money. This is a no-brainer. It, it's a boat access grant from DNR, the state of Illinois. It's, it's to improve boat launch and loading areas within your communities and within your Parks and Lakes systems. Many of you know, our, our boat launch and, and stuff out of Jacksonville could always use help, but Brett and I kinda talked about it, and the complaints we hear pretty regular are actually at Lake Mova Star, because it's a, a big rock chump, concrete, gravel ramp, and, and a lot of the nice fishermen won't take their, the, the nice boats, they won't take their, their equipment out there because they're afraid of tearing it up on the ramps and, and stuff like that. But, we thought, what a nice opportunity with a hundred percent money to fix up the Lake Mova Star ramp, because since we've dredged it, it gets a lot more fishing and everything than what a lot of people realize. But, most won't use it because the, the ramp is just, it's just not very good at all. But, with a hundred percent money, what a good opportunity to fix this ramp up. And Lori has some preliminary sketches, and I, I talked with Jim Burke, he's helping us with this grant. We split the grants between both of our local engineering firms. And I believe we have a representative with Benton's here, or I mean, with, do we have someone? Jim thought he might send someone this evening. Do we have someone with Hutchinson?
I think we got more. I just had to fill that one in.
Okay. But anyway, this is what we like to do with the Mova Star ramp, and it allows for some parking instead of getting stuck in the mud when someone has a, a boat and a, and a truck coming out of the water. That's typically what happens now. But, this would be a really nice improvement, and we would like the, the date is the same, October nineteenth is the application cutoff date, I, I mean, August. So, we'd like to be able to move forward with this one as well. But, but this one is nothing out of your pocket. This is a hundred percent grant. And, and anytime there's money out there, I like to go for it, see, see what we can do.
What are you gonna do with the surface to mitigate runoff?
Of the ramp?
The park.
Yeah, there won't be anything like, any kind of detention, so it'll just run the lake.
You don't have to put any permanent work in.
No, it'll probably be oil and chip, I imagine, is what it'll be. Any questions?
Mike, might have a question.
Could you do two projects under that grant or just one?
I think it's just one.
What would the other one?
Sorry, Jackson.
What improvements have you done at Lake Jacksonville on that boat ramp?
Well, we've done, it wasn't that long ago, Brett can help me here, we've done docks improvements, and that whole ramp was concreted and updated not that long ago. It, it's a pretty good system we have out there at, at the lake. I mean, we can always put money into it, don't get me wrong, there's, there's, you know, things we can do. We just thought it'd be a good opportunity to improve Lake Mova Star. Brett, anything like that?
The biggest thing that what we've been doing for the last couple of years, we wanna, did is electroshocking. I don't want you guys to think that we're just gonna put a boat launch in with the idea that there are fish in that lake. But we've started to do some things to, to, when we did our electroshocking, we were shocked about the good quality of fish, both bass, crappie, and channel catfish that are in there. We closed down October seventeenth. We have duck and deer hunting, and then we closed down to winterize the facility. And, we can't control Mother Nature, so you would be shocked how many times I get, October seventeenth, it's seventy-five degrees out in our clothes. Well, if we can get this launch open, that gives our local guys an opportunity to go fishing here in Jacksonville, not go to Springfield, or Rushville, or Sidon, and places like that. It would be a very big contribution to the fisheries here in Jacksonville. And there's people lined up wanting to fish there, but the problem, like Kelly stated, is they can't get their truck and their trailer down there without the risk of tearing something up. And this would also stop the kids from throwing stuff out there on the ice that are sitting, you know, the rocks to check the ice. It'd be nice and clean, people'd be able to utilize it, and it would be, it would be fabulous for us.
How deep is that Lake Mova Star?
Well, they just dredged, was it two or four years ago, they dredged the main channel back. You know, and I haven't had a chance to put it, put our depth on that yet. I would say, like you said.
Some places are about twelve to.
About twelve.
Now, if you, the further east you go, it's not, it's not nearly there. Twelve inches. Yeah, yeah.
And then, so, this hundred percent grant covers the tear out of the existing dock proposed boat ramp, proposed boat ramp, and all the parking?
I believe that's correct. Again, in two weeks, Jim will be back to give you full details. We're just asking if it's okay to move forward.
With the grant.
With the grant applications.
And Steve, sorry, I know you had a question of regarding runoff. Did you get your question answered?
Yeah, I thought maybe you might have to like a semi-permeable surface or something like that. Just, if nothing else, to be a good example for what we should be doing in the watershed.
So we don't know, we don't know, but we don't know the surface right now.
I don't know that we're increasing runoff anymore. We'll ask Jim.
I guess the other comment is, I've talked to some people lately, and they said, man, it'd be nice to have paddleboat rentals, or rowboat rentals, or something like that. It'd be nice that, that the Parks Department did something, even just like on a trial basis, like some weekend, did like some sort of event there. Cause during the Fourth of July celebration, I went out with a friend in the canoe on the lake, and it was just really nice to be on there.
Here's the thing with that is, we have to prioritize every single thing that would be, there's a lot of fantastic ideas out there. There are a lot of great ideas. But you can't start on a foundation that's crumbling. You have to have a sturdy foundation before we can start adding more new stuff. This would be, it would be the start of something like that, you know, where we'd actually have access to do those things. But the first thing we've gotta do is make sure that, what we're trying to do, the foundation, before we start adding other things too.
I guess what I was trying to say was, it'd be nice to get some outfitter or something like that, even just for like a special event. Because, I mean, if you think about it, Jacksonville's amazing. We have a lake right in town, and no one uses it. I mean, some people use it, but more people should be on that lake.
Well, you put a boat launch in there, and you'll have a lot more than we used once you've done that.
Lori?
Yes.
I might add that I've been working with, don't quote me on this, I believe it's the paddle yak club here in Jacksonville that, that have recently established themselves. We have found them a home on Lake Mova Star, and we're putting in, we're clearing and making some improvements for them. So, the, the paddle yak club is coming to, this is kayaks and canoes, and I believe they're about thirty members strong, and, and we are now making a home for them on Lake Mova Star, and they're very excited about that.
They did a really cool cleanup of Mova Star Creek this spring. Very nice.
Thank you, Lori.
Is there any news on the three nineteen grant for the in Lake Dam? Last I heard, that no news is good news. That's something else we can think of.
Okay.
Are we good to move forward then?
Yes, is, can we just kinda voice vote, to move forward, everybody good with moving forward?
Sure.
With both, with both. So, thank you very much.
And before you move on, with that being said, we have some, as Greg said earlier, we, the city did a really great job of getting community support to move forward with the bike path. And Steve, honestly, you, you are amazing at getting the community aware of what was going on. And, so, we would love to have your input and insight to help us do that again with this project. This is a, this is a sheet. All of you can have one. We need signatures. The more signatures we get, we'll show more support to the community. We'll also be reaching out, asking people in the community to help write letters. So, if we could just pass around, everyone can take one, if you need to make more copies, if you could bring it back in two weeks, we'll include it with our grant. Okay. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
You can still do it. Take it to road, really. It's really a big council, doesn't it?
I'll be right there.
You can drop it off at my house.
Oh.
I'll come get it.
Hey, do you, do you wanna give us an update on Michigan Avenue?
Oh, you guys, Michigan Avenue is amazing. It's finished. It is. Oh, it's fast. They're not dodging potholes. The neighbors are static. It's, it's great, so.
Fast. How fast do you drive them?
Oh, fast. No, it's, it's wonderful. And everyone that I've talked to is, is just blown away at how great it looks, and what a great ride it is, and how great the workers were to work with everyone on the street. So, thank you. It's great.
Okay, special studies, a great topic. Alderman, ask me.
Alderman Adams has some, you know, the work on this. I'll go ahead and do it. Mr. Committee Chair and Mr. Mayor, when I first came to the council, I was, I was glad I got put on utilities and went around and talked to Jeff from Water and Leland from Sewer. And, the day after I talked to Leland, a solar consultant had, had came there the day before me and talked with improvements through this, the, uh, the, I believe it's the upkeep funds. And, what we're looking at is going to be something of a proposal for a power purchasing agreement for solar to help the city's taxpayers get some of their money back instead of paying for the city's power bills. We might be able to find some extra money by coming to an agreement with Simple Ray or other entities to be able to offset that cost in a power purchasing agreement. And Joe Christian is their representative. He's a renewable energy consultant for Simple Ray, and he would like to discuss the proposal. I believe he has some information on the proposal itself, as well has some information on the system.
Yeah, the first thing, I appreciate you all taking the time to talk with me here. This is the same proposal that I dropped off for Brandon and Leland at the wastewater treatment plant. I have a separate sheet of paper that contains what the breakdown would be for the, the rates. Essentially, there's two different main types of incentives available for a lot of folks that go solar. There's a thirty percent federal tax credit right now, and there's adjustable block money from the state of Illinois. Because obviously Jacksonville does not have, because Jacksonville does not have the necessity to have the thirty percent federal tax credit, it allows you guys to look at a possible option called power purchasing agreement. So, power purchasing agreement. Now, what I'll do, I'll hand one of these off to you. I'll go back this way. Yeah. Basically, what this allows us to do is it's a twenty-five-year term. It's existing basically like a regular service contract that you're gonna enter in with any kind of electric company. So, what you're gonna see on the left side there is the contracted rate that we are offering for the city at the wastewater treatment plant right now. Currently, it comes in at nine one hundredths less of a cent than what you're currently paying. There's zero money down for a power purchasing agreement. It's a twenty-five-year term, like I said, and there's a small buyout in, or a relatively small buyout in year twenty-six. Now, what this allows you guys to do is to take advantage of the, in, I'm gonna say, the best way, right now, all the incentives have lined up, and kind of all the stars are aligning, to allow for this good of a deal in front of you here. For reference, I just presented one of these to a school outside PRA, and they're getting ten cents a kilowatt hour. But you guys have such a lower rate. We were still able to apply the federal tax credit on our end with purchasing the array, as well as collecting the adjustable block program money to offer a, a rate lower than this. Simple Ray actually owns and maintains the array for twenty-five years. So, we're, we were proposing to install a one point five nine kilowatt tracker array. So, it's actually a tracker with the sun. We're gonna build it the way we would build any of our products that would be owned by the client, because we don't wanna have any issues come up on our side as we're going on with the ongoing maintenance. We don't wanna have any issues of cutting corners and not doing it right, and then we'd be on the hook for it as opposed to you guys right now. So, as you guys would go forward, this is a way that, it would allow you basically to just lower your costs that you're paying right now for the electric that's out there. We're able to offer an array that's gonna have the locked-in rate of five cents a kilowatt hour. So even in year one, it's nominal savings on the far right side when you look accumulated. Year one, you save two thousand two hundred and ten dollars, seventy-four cents, in just the solar bill, and the electric bill you're ahead. But if you look down to year thirty, you're saving two point eight million dollars in just the electric cost that's gonna run that wastewater treatment plant. That's assuming a very modest increase in electric costs of three and a half percent over the years. So, since we are able to offer this and lock it in, you're not gonna have any of the issues running down the road of when electric rates are eventually up twenty percent what they are now. Furthermore, it goes through a thirty year system, or a thirty year life breakdown here. System life is closer to forty to forty-five years on our tracking rates. So, once you do the buyout in year twenty-six, you're still gonna have close to twenty years of power production from that array. Okay? I'm sure there's all sorts of questions. We can talk about that. One of the options that we were talking to, I went down with Ike, I've been working with him heavily at different sites. We went down and checked out the wastewater treatment facility, but there are some areas that are slated for future use that is kinda fluctuating, it's a little fluid there, to see where the best area to put up this array would be at. We're thinking that, Brandon had asked me, what about the other city locations? What about City Hall? Is that gonna be a good fit potentially? What about our water treatment facility? Yeah, those would both be good ideas, for sure. They're high usage. We're gonna be able to come in and offer, because the usage is as high as it is, and the rates are what they are, we can come in and offer a long-term solution that is competitive with what you are offering now. We went and checked out a water treatment center on Friday, walked through that, got a good, great tour from Ike to see exactly what you guys had invested there. So, it, it wasn't just a, a cookie cutter system that was set up for short-term fix moving forward. You could tell there was the pride that was into that building. There's the little extra, extra design works that were done in there, so you guys could be, not only have a functional building, but a prideful building for the long haul setup. It was nice to see a city have that approach. It's not always the approach that cities have that you should invest in the infrastructure for the long term. So, Ike asked me this morning, actually, what was the possibility? Would we be able to look at the water treatment plant compared to the wastewater treatment plant? Because there's less, I guess, future development plan there, could be a little better way to put it. There's less future development plan there because it was just built, and you have this expanse where the old water treatment plant was. So, based on the metrics that we have here, our chief engineer comes, comes in, looks at the data that I get from you. I get twelve months of billing statements directly from Ameren, or from you guys that way. I document all that. I track which portions of your bills are actually gonna be, able to be offset. Anybody who tells you that they're gonna be able to eliminate all of your bill, every bit of a line item, is one of them. There's not, that's not possible. I would rather go through the motions that we have set in place, the process we have, to be diligent about how we're recording your, your data, than actually having me come on, taking the pictures, documenting all of the electrical infrastructure out there for our engineering team, and to come back and say, hey, this is why we're gonna be able to offset eighty-seven percent of your power as opposed to a hundred and five percent. I'd rather tell you what you're getting and why you're getting it than overpromise and have you be upset after the fact. It's not how we plan things. We've done jobs like this before. We've done jobs primarily, the largest one I'm thinking of is for the city, the city of Bloomfield, Iowa. It's a, I think it's a one point nine eight megawatt tracking array, so it's a little bit larger than this, but we've done it before. It does offer the same tracking components that we are offering this, and that's something we typically don't offer unless it is a large enough job that can make sense of using it. So, as we go through, you guys can see the initial site layout on the water treatment plant here. It's, it's, it's quite the undertaking, but the fact that it's. It's, it's quite the undertaking, but the fact that it's 0% down, and you guys can be cash flow positive at year one, and then you're basically just taking your existing electrical rate. We have a, if you, it's just looking at from basically taking your existing electrical rate, putting it towards getting the exact same power you need, but at a lower rate. And finding that at a 25-year fixed rate is, is not very common that you would come to. So, several things talking about this. Because the incentives are aligned the way they are right now, it is allowing for this to be a great option at this time. The federal tax credit drops to 26% January 1st. That was something that was set in place several years ago. The adjustable block program money right now, although it would not be going to the city, it goes into the project to help keep the project cost low. So, with that being available, and the 30% federal tax credit coming back to help us keep our costs low when we're installing it, is how we can get this. After the first of the year, it's going to go down 4% on the federal side, and we're also not certain about what the block incentive is going to look like for next year for large-scale projects like this. So, although it is a large project, and there's a lot going on with it, now is the ideal time to be considering, if you want to have the fastest payback and get the most money back that way. If it came back next year, we might be looking at more of a variable rate that would start low, and it would grow a little bit over time, but stay under the utility rates. That's something else we can do.
What other communities in Illinois have you serviced?
Have I serviced? This would be the largest community one that I have serviced. This would be my first municipality that I've worked with.
Are there any in Illinois that you've worked with?
In Illinois? No. I know we were close to working with Silvis, Illinois, on a couple of their, with their public works buildings as well.
And with this, what is the probability of being offline?
Offline, it is a grid tight system. So, basically, what we do is we always try to size up an array that is going to get you as close to 100% as possible. We're not including battery packs at this time. You would still want to rely on your generators out there. I know the water treatment, so everyone's a 2 megawatt generator, you know, there you're talking about. You would still be using that in case of a system, if it went offline for some reason. Power outage in that regard. And although, yeah, absolutely.
So, for you to install this and do the project, you don't need any money at all?
No money at all.
You just need us to say that we're going to buy electricity from you for 25 years.
Yes, sir.
And at year 25, there's a buyout for the last bit of?
Yeah.
So, the maintenance contract, so you said it tracks the sun?
Yeah.
So what happens if one of the sun trackers breaks? Do you come out and fix it?
Yes.
So now, all the equipment is yours until we buy, and you're still hooked up to the, to Illinois Power, whoever our power supplier is?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, like if it's night, or a storm or something like that, you're not generating electricity, we're still using our power?
Yes, you would still, you would still have power in that regard. We would, I'm sorry, rephrase, can I?
Sure, go ahead.
What, you're asking if it's, if it's not powering during the day, and you're using, running at nighttime, or you're using a different power, is that what you were asking?
Well, at night, you're not producing so much electricity, so it's just getting electricity off the grid.
Yeah, it's all grid tightening. So what we're doing is we're, we're tracking your production that you're going to have going on. And the thing that's really favorable about Ameren, who you guys are using, is they have an annual net metering policy. So it allows you to bank up all your summer usage and deduct that from your winter usage. It's not set up on a monthly net metering, which can really hamper, raise payback or functionality that way. A lot of smaller rural co-ops have a quarterly, a quarterly metering as well. That's also not as favorable. So, it allows you to bank up all your usage, and then it deducts what you're using. So that's the way it looks like. It's not an instantaneous trade-off that would happen, but rather a cumulative off that way.
And so what you said about the generators, so if there's a general power outage for the whole area, you can still provide, you said 80 to 100% of the power, but the generators just to provide the last bit of power that the board needs?
Ideally, this system has been, this is why we do our due diligence on the front end, to get the, the data like other companies don't. We want to make sure that this array is big enough to provide all the power that you would need for the year. If the power goes off for some reason, and the grid's not working, that's when the backup generators on site would kick up and make sure everything was still running as it should.
So you're paying, you're powering all the pumps and all the stuff out of the water plant? Or you're not powering any of the others, municipal?
No, this was specifically for the wastewater treatment plant. I've collected all of the data and pictures for my engineering team to create one for the water treatment plant, because after talking with Brandon and Ike and Jamie, basically, there's, that might be a better situation to look at doing first, because it is something that you know you have the land usage now. There's not a lot of stuff that's, that's kind of in discussion to be, is there going to be another tank here south of these other two tanks at this time? Is this large open field going to be vacant long enough for us to actually put it there? Or is it something that's laid for future land use? This is something you want to make sure moving forward.
What's the lifecycle of the stuff that you guys put into generating? How long does that stuff typically last, 25 years or longer, 50 years?
Oh, you're talking panels themselves? The panels themselves have a 35-year expected lifecycle, 35 to 40 years in there, it's actually an issue. All the panels have an 80% production guarantee as well. So, we can come out at the end of 25, 24 and a half years, test all the different panels out there, and if they're not working at at least the 80% threshold, we swap those out. So you guys would be, have a system that is to a T what we have guaranteed throughout the 25 years when you would be doing the buyout purchase that way.
How would flooding impact on this?
Flooding, we would, we were talked about doing an elevator array, so that all the components would not be underwater. That said, I know that our arrays can be underwater and power a pump that is outside of the pool. So they can handle the, the attention that would be there. Now, how, if they're going to be underground for weeks or months, I don't know how long the last, how long a bad flood can come over here, but it's something to be aware of. It has 500-year floods happening every five years.
If your solar panel farm floods, then we have bigger problems. Because this is all inside the?
The burn?
The burn, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we're able to do it by power.
Let's hope, let's hope that's not the case. Yeah, bigger fish to fry at that point.
Literally.
But then, hey, I can just go to a mug star to catch them, and we can just tie it all together.
Um, living over in that area, it does flood a lot really bad all the time. And it's not just a little flood, it's feet and feet, so.
But this is inside the burn, inside the water?
To the west side it's not. To the west side, it's actually outside the burn.
Oh, okay.
So we would have to talk with you guys about historic flood levels and figure all that stuff out too. But that's just a part of the gateway to jump through, figure out the system that is needed to be designed specifically here.
Joe, for, for the different locations, the water plant and the sewer plant, percentage of the total power in a year can the solar provide? If you had to kind of just make a summary of that? You know, water treatment plant has a lot of high, big horsepower pumps that run all the time.
We've sized this up to be large enough to provide all the power that the water treatment facility need. It's, it's just with the water, or with the wastewater treatment facility?
Wastewater.
With the water treatment facility, we haven't, I haven't figured that out yet, because we're still waiting to get the data back. Because we, we build systems to be as close to 100% as possible, we never, we wait till we get the data that way. Some folks want to tell you that if you overproduce, Ameren will buy back the power that way, and it's a great way you can count on paying it down, and that's not a real feasibility way to do it. Because you're not sure how much you're actually getting back, you don't want to calculate on that, and Ameren's paying you maybe a cent and a half compared to seven or eight cents you're paying now. So once I get all the data for the water treatment facility, we should be sitting free there. The one thing that's good there is because that large area is off to the east there, where the water plant used to be, although it's, you know, a few hundred feet to get to the transformer from that location, because it would be such a large array in that location, that wouldn't be much of a hindrance to getting the project done that way. So I would say if we were able to get to that area and make that feasible, we would be able to make an array that would be large enough to offset the power of the water plant.
So, the goal is trying to get 100%?
Yes.
The goal is possible.
Yes, that's what we try to do, and that's one of the things that we, that sets us apart too, the diligence and trying to get to that.
And the reason you try to get to 100% is so you're not buying the power or selling it back at a cheap rate? And Ameren is one of the companies that does work with solar installers the best during their, you said their yearly offset?
Yeah. Yearly net metering, annual net metering.
To be able to take all the power generated in the summer and bank it out to say there's not that much power generated in the winter, and then that's what we use for as far as the 100% that you're trying to achieve.
Yes.
Other than Silvis, have you made this presentation to other?
I have not made this presentation. Another one of my folks, my coworkers up in Silvis has. I have not. I'm, I'm from Peoria, born and bred, and there's another guy up that way that takes care of it.
So how many presentations have you made in Illinois?
Oh, me, myself? Oh, about 100 or so?
Have you worked with other entities in municipal?
Yes, I primarily do.
Schools or something like that?
Yeah, my, the largest job I have right now is a half-megawatt project in Peoria, Illinois. It's at Allens and Sun Meat Company. They're looking to save 7,500 bucks a month with their power cost savings. It's a combination of ground array, roof array, and it's an ongoing process because some other things are fluid there too.
I guess that's what was missing. Can you talk a little bit more about past projects you did, and how big they are and stuff? Because I think the perception might have been that this is only your second merge.
No, no, no.
Explain more about that.
I apologize. Yeah, so the way we go about, as I've come through, I've been with the company since April of 2018. I'm an Illinois guy, born and bred, I moved Colorado, came back, because this is something I saw the light was coming. That said, hopefully, there's two things I do that put myself apart and set people up. I moved away, moved back, I'm not going to do anything to remind anyone of the company's name. That goes a long way with saying, hey, I'm going to be the guy local that can answer all the questions you have. If you have an issue, I can be on top of it, I can get in touch with our engineers, I can get in touch with the manufacturers and say this is what we need. Several aspects about Simple Ray are different than what other companies that I see run across. One reason, above industry standard model crystalline panels. Typically, you're seeing polycrystalline. They're usually produced between 300 to 330 watts power. Our, our panels are specced out at 370 watts. And I know we're starting to roll out some other specs that are going to be closer to the 385, 390 watts. So, as I continue to see those differences between us, that sets me up for, I, I'm excited to see that. Two, I talked about the diligence that we do with data entry. I have to talk with folks all the time about, well, this company didn't require me to give them 12 months of statements. Why do you need them? Well, because I want to make sure what I'm telling you is accurate. I want to make sure that the ROI I give you is as close as it can be, so that you're not shocked when you come back and say, hey, I was supposed to get this, and now I'm back bills this, what's going on? That's something I, I'm never going to do. I would rather tell somebody the answer about why we were better, and it's a little bit more expensive, or it's producing more power than what other folks have that's overpromising in that regard. There are several different ways you can go about working in a solar. This was the best way, I felt, because of the incentives that were available now. And it's a little bit different than what most companies get. In a commercial setting, most of them are going to go with a cash buyout or a couple of different leasing options to go that way, if they wanted to go with this. The power purchasing agreement is something that's only available to, that we only offer for companies that have a usage of 250 KW or higher, or 250,000 kilowatt hours a year or higher. Just because it's a way that we, it, it's just not something we offer to everyone. It has to be kind of a scale large enough, they have to have a high enough power rate that they're going to charge, and they also have to have the land space available too. And the engineer looks through everything, makes the matrix up, and sees which ones are viable. With this being available to you, this is going to be the most instant cost savings down the line. Because there is no money out of cost, and it can yield such vast savings for the city moving forward.
I have one.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't know much about solar energy. But what I do know is today's technology is moving quicker than most of us can keep up with. So, looking at a 25-year projection out, what do you foresee your company looking like in 25, 30 years?
Yeah, hopefully, if we can keep doing things the way we have been governing. We've had, we've had sustainable growth without being, waiting for the bubble burst that way. The company's been around for 12 years, or 11 and a half years around.
Who thinks it's going to go on with solar energy then?
What I think, I think solar energy's coming, for sure. I, I don't think, I, I, there's a reason we're not hard putting whales for oil anymore. We found something better. And although coal and gas have gotten us long, they're not going away. They're still going to be here, we're still going to be relying on them. But as the Illinois pushes, as Illinois pushes for its pathway to 100, which I think is set to 2070 or 2075 now, it was 20, it's 25 by 2025? They're rolling that out. I see solar continuing to grow in the area, and as cities like, hopefully Jacksonville, and projects like the Allens come on, and other smaller projects that I have in the area come on, people are going to start seeing it, then they're going to start talking about the economic savings that are there, and then it's just going to snowball.
Right.
And I think what you're kind of getting at is, in 25 years, it'd be way better.
Which brings me to my next point. This is like a really large footprint for solar panels at the wastewater treatment plant. So, whose, in 25 years, whose responsibility, or who owns these solar panels?
He would own, the city would own it in 25 years.
And so what do we do in 25 years, you know? With the first phone was three times as big, now it's this big.
Yeah.
And so in 25 years?
Yeah. You keep bonding them for another 15 years, and you save like a hundred thousand dollars a year.
But there might be something more efficient.
There could be something more efficient.
But they're not, he's not relying on future, he's, he's showing you numbers like, he, the nice thing about solar is you, he can tell you right now what it's going to cost every year.
I think solar energy is, I think solar energy is great. But I also want to think in 35 years, when the solar panels are sitting there, whose responsibility is to?
Update them.
Update them, remove them, build in something new. I mean, how much more money, how much money could that cost us? Costs us $50,000 to tear down a building.
So what's the decommissioning cost then, I guess? That's a question I will have to follow up on. I do not know what decommission cost on that. We've talked about ongoing maintenance a little bit, what that would look like, products we can offer. The good thing that I would say is even if you had to think of decommission costs, you're more than likely going to save, I don't know, four or five times full at least what the cost would be now. But then it's a matter of allocating that for that.
And, and no disrespect?
No, no, no.
In 25 years, there's probably going to be a lot more companies, there's going to be a lot more competition. And so, would that drive costs down, you know, potentially even more with different incentives?
The incentives, I don't see increasing from what they are now, because there's too many folks. The, the block you're on in the adjustable block program is block four of the large general distribution from Ameren. The other, smaller general distribution for Ameren is still on block one. That large group was so oversaturated with projects, there was such a clear demand for it that was unknown, that they went through block one, two, and three, and then reallocated funds to block four. I do not see them throwing out more incentives to that to make people that buy next year and future years get a better incentive than the people that bought first. The other thing is, if you look at what the water treatment plant, that I was over there the other day, there was infrastructure from that plant, that was from the old plant that got brought over. Correct. Because it still worked.
Blower.
The blower, the blower I saw, I was looking at it, and it's an older blower I'm looking at. There's things that are working that are going to continue to work. Yeah, there might have been something that was better to be out there, but the city already had it and paid for it, and it was paid off that way. So although there might be a way for the city to get a smaller footprint and more power in 30 years, that's, that's an unknown unknown at this point.
Let's see, the timeline of this particular agreement?
30 days.
30 days?
It says on paper 30 days.
So we would have to make a decision in 30 days.
What we are looking for from you guys, if we were to do anything, would be a letter of intent so that we can start the engineering work to get it done. This project is about, this product itself is about 95% engineered, 90% engineered. We have to configure wiring diagrams to get those done for the Illinois Power Agency to make sure it can get into the adjustable block program. We've got other aspects to it as well. So what we're looking for there is we need to get the applications submitted, we need to get the wiring diagrams completed, but for that, we need to make sure that it's something you guys would be willing to do.
So, in your opinion, you know, I, it was told we were starting off with the sewer, but maybe we're going to switch gears and start with the water. Has there been any discussion on, and, and that's fine, if we go one at a time, that's fine, but big picture wise, you know, if we're going with water and we go with sewer, what about, you know, putting back in the municipal building here? The community center, it's going to be close to the sewer plant, pick up the city garage. You know, there's, there's buildings the city owns, you know, not necessarily, I don't know how much, the city garage probably doesn't have a whole lot of energy, or the parks, you know, where you guys are. But, you know, has that been talked about, or are you just kind of focused more on the water plant now?
No, I, that's a good question. Brandon asked me, he said, hey, we've got all these other facilities, what's a good place to think about if you look at these? I suggested going after the higher usage places first, just because there was less, less incentives available at a lower rate there. So I was like, let's check out the wastewater treatment plant. Then we got into that a little bit, and then we said, hey, let's, let's check out the water treatment plant. It might be a better first place to consider, because there's less going on there at this time.
Right.
So, yes, we, I've talked, I've spoken with my chief engineer, I've spoken with my sales manager about the possibility of combining those into a PPA that way. And if we do that, we might be able And if we do that, we might be able to use the economy of scale to offer a lower rate in that regard. Now, I don't know if that's gonna be able to partner, basically, if we just looked at the water municipality and wastewater, I don't know if we'd be able to do all three of those together or if we'd be doing two of them together or how that would work. But that's all stuff as we continue to get more sites mocked up, checked out that way, get data documented that we'd be able to figure out for sure.
Ken, you also tell me where were you tying to your energy source, where, how's that?
How's it work out? Okay. Basically, the array's gonna have an inverter, it's gonna kick it all, it's gonna come down, tie right into your meter. So they can see exactly this, it's a grid tied system that way.
Okay.
Jamie?
Yes.
When you do work out at the sewer plant, you're gonna be doing some lines or overflow work, you're doing new houses, stuff like that? Is our energy is gonna go up with more equipment or is it gonna go down with more efficient equipment? Or how, what would you say about power?
You talking just long term or the future or?
Just, just talk the next ten years or so, cause that's what you're looking at for your other part.
Yeah, and as a reminder, the city council, we're, we're in kinda the final twenty percent of the wastewater treatment plant facility planning process. We're in the final kinda modeling stages of what the different process options might be. And those process options may consist of different amounts of tankage on site, which has an effect on the footprint of the solar array. So we talked about different alternatives as far as having either arrays or ray or, you know, what's actually available for the solar, the solar options. So we have new equipment going in, it's usually a higher efficiency than what was in now. So generally, the energy draw from the new stuff is less. I don't have a final energy profile for you and what the next ten years look like. That's one of the reasons why we, we started talking to solar folks, that. Are we going to have digester gas to recycle? You know, some of those kinda broader energy topics, we're trying to plug those all in so we can give the city council a good understanding of what that looks like to answer your question, Steve, but we just don't quite have it done yet.
So is he here because you brought him here?
Yeah, we, we looked at, I don't know how long ago, I think a few months ago. A few months ago, we started talking then because we wanted to look at solar and other options for the wastewater plant for this plan that we're talking about. Like to make sure that digester gas, you know, will we even have digesters in the future? As we look at phosphorus down the road, doing it either biologically or chemically, some of the sludge processing things may change. So we wanted to have solar as part of that sort of broad energy profile discussion. Yeah, we're hoping to have that in the next couple of months maybe in that timeframe.
Another question, you designed the water treatment plant, what were the considerations for solar at that time?
We looked at it, at that time, the incentives, I think, all different, which was still seven years ago.
Yeah, the Illinois block grant program didn't exist, so the, so the incentives were there.
But we, we thought about it, okay, what in the future would we do? We have those utility buildings that the city purchased as part of that property, we have the top of the clearwell, we have the old abandoned water treatment plant site that's not clear. Granted, still floods, it can do it. So we thought about where we'd put it if we would and if the incentives got there and that's kinda where we're at today, actually.
So you're an engineering type person, so what do you think about his numbers and how, does it just look like a good project? I guess that's why he's here or?
Yeah.
What would you comment?
Yeah, I'm encouraged by him. I think what we wanna make sure we do is we, we can't shortchange our space at the wastewater treatment plant. Because the big picture is we have to meet our MPTS permit effluent requirements and we have to do this in terms of the next twenty, thirty years. So we wanna make sure we, we do that effectively, but then if we can use whatever space is left to offset that power cost. I mean, that's, and the wastewater plant usually is a little bit better place to do that offset because the horsepower is usually less. So we're trying to get as much as we can out of this, you know, change in the plant that we're gonna have down the road. I think it's, it's, it's all good going forward, but we need to get the details cleaned up a little bit. Somebody mentioned the flooding, some of the arrays are outside of the levee, so we need to work on some of those details.
The other question, in terms of maintenance?
Yeah.
So right now, you're gonna put this where grass is, right?
Yeah.
So like right now, if someone mows your grass, they just mow the grass back and forth. So what do we have, how do you have to maintain the grass after the arrays are there?
The arrays are anywhere from ten to twelve inches off the ground on the low end, up to eight feet on, on the high end. So you do have enough room to get a mower deck under there, but we would also recommend if you wanted to, you could put some, some grass killer down there if you wanted to do that, you could, or weed whacker around. There's all the, also different ways to keep the mold for rock underneath them so you don't have to worry about any of that ongoing cutback or cutting of grass.
I was up through Iowa this weekend, up around Hampton, Iowa, and every solar array I saw, which there's a lot of them up there, they all had rock underneath them, almost exclusively. Some had grass, but it was very light grass or not very.
Cause paying some, someone, you need wages to weed whack or something that no one's, I mean, it's just there anyways, it doesn't really matter if it's mowed or not, so.
Yeah, so I, I would say that there's that, and if anything did happen with the system within twenty-five years, there's a couple of things to hope alleviate that issue. One would be, we have our own internal monitoring of the system through our, through the inverters we can check out. The inverter company is actually SMA, it's a German company, and they have just redesigned their inverters to allow for a lot more customization. And one of the things that it allows is automatic mitigation if there's a problem that it flags. It flags it, it not only tells us that there's an issue at simple end, it also starts the process of ordering the replacement parts to get it here. Take it all with us.
Is that something you can do, is gravel the levee? I had just spoke about that, which is earlier with Joe, which should eliminate the flooding factor and then that would eliminate some of the space requirements that were slated for future use or whatnot and then so.
Gravel eliminate.
Well, cause like.
On the north side.
Yeah, cause who wants to mow the top of a levee underneath a solar panel?
Yeah, I don't think it's down there on the levee though.
No, if it was, if it was something like that, that would eliminate the flooding. And if everybody's talking about the flooding under the twenty-five year agreement, would you guys just be in there replacing what?
Yeah, ideally, we'd be designing a system that wouldn't have to, we wouldn't have to be replacing anything. Because it's gonna have the tier one manufacturers as we require, they're gonna be able to hold up to this type of stuff. But that being said, if we can elevate it a little bit and have larger stations that supports underneath to get it out of the water, then we're, we're cooking and then it's not an issue we really have to worry about.
Generally speaking, they try to keep construction on levees to a dull roar.
Okay.
Structures and, you know, you keep the access down though, so there's no compromising of the levees. But elevating it outside the levee is always.
Absolutely, and we talked about possibly doing it up over the aeration basins as well.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth thinking about, however, you know, as, as we talked to Rick about that, I would be a little hesitant from having solar arrays over a process, process equipment unless we can really work out the access situation to make sure that what we're doing in the wastewater tanks not gonna negatively affect the solar arrays.
Absolutely.
Cause there's a lot of action going on down there.
I think, appreciate you kinda giving a presentation, but a couple of different things that pop out at me is, you know, certainly, we, you know, what Ben's, we did with the water treatment plant when we were constructing and we talked about this exact same thing. So they have us in our best interest and they, you know, just like they're looking at the water treatment plant right now to do some kind of solar thing. So right now, this is great discussion, however, that's all it is, is discussion because it ain't gonna happen in thirty days.
That's fine.
And with our engineers involved, they, they have our best interest in it. If we get to that point, it's gonna be a bid project, just like any other major project, so. It's, it's great discussion and.
I talked to two different companies in Springfield and they do it for school districts and around the area. And they were a little bit gun shy because I don't think you're talking about doing something and have it bid out. Cause the other companies, they don't wanna do all the work for designing it and then have someone come in and just like scoop up the job under the bid process.
That is to a T something that we, we are conservative, but.
But I mean, has, no other company has talked to us about this and like made a proposal?
How do we know unless we put it out in business? How do we know we got six companies to build a water treatment plant versus one or two?
So, but then we would have to pay some of the engineers, the whole project and bid it out.
You don't see how you win.
If we. What we would try to offer up would be a service contract that way to get around the PPA or the RFP side of things in regards to this project. Let's talk with Brandon now, if we were able to look at this as a service contract to make sure you were able to get in with the thirty percent federal tax credit and adjustable block program where it's at now. And then, once that got kicked off, possibly looking at doing an RFP for the other sites down the road. But that's up to you guys, obviously, I don't wanna put a bad taste in your mouth regarding that.
If you look at the numbers on this project, I mean, approximately, talking like, we don't have to pay anything till year twenty-six.
Well, we don't know because.
It's a service.
They make up, the engineers may come back and say, you can't put it there, we're gonna expand and do something else. I'm just saying a discussion, it's getting a little.
Right. I guess I'm looking at this project, it's gonna save us like two million dollars over the next twenty-five years.
That's just one entity. And there's all these entities that the city uses.
So what if it saves us fifty thousand dollars?
There's the lake, there's the parks, there's.
Yeah, I'm about to, what?
The parks and the wells and Naples.
We don't know a lot about this subject, but Jamie does.
He does.
Water guy, elected old guy.
They're, they're the ones we're gonna have to rely on.
And that's fair, and one thing I will say to this is I came from a background with working with cities and municipalities. Please do not be hung up on the thirty days, seeing as this is all kind of a fluid situation right now and we need to figure out where the, where is a viable area based on future use. We can come back and get more of this stuff, this is very much a, a fluid conversation and I understand that completely. So as questions come up, please let me know and I'd love to help in any way I can.
And if the council's okay with it, we'll continue to talk to Joe about the availability of space at wastewater treatment plants so we can get a better answer on what's the possibilities out there.
Is it conceivable you could build this by the end of the year?
It's conceivable that we could, we could start it and get it going. In order to qualify for everything.
You have to break ground to get your.
You have to have significant construction started, as vague as that can be. So what that's looking at is whether it's hammering posts to put the tracking array on or things like that. That's where we'd be sitting with that.
So we need to do this within like the next five months, otherwise it goes into a lower.
It would go into a lower bracket and payback and we might not be able to offer, we will not be able to offer the same low rate fix there. It might be a little bit higher, but it should be a little bit higher because of that.
Joe LaMaire mentioned and Brandon some others, the different possible locations. Is, is there any clarity, like you were pointing to say, okay, the city would like to look at these five locations? You know, the wastewater plant is a little more in blocks right now, but the others are more of a set situation where you could actually have more firm numbers.
Yes.
You know, I don't know if there's a way the council can give them some guidance on that, maybe down the road, maybe not necessarily tonight, but.
Yeah.
The firm locations are probably an easier spot to target, I'm wondering.
Yeah, definitely, that's the thing with, when we can jump into, once we get all the data documented for the engineering folks at the water treatment plant or if we did it here, well, we know exactly what's there, what's going to be there and for the long term. So that would be a lot more set number. I can tell you one thing, because the, the adjustable block money in Illinois is all based on your power production. They take the power production, they give you a rate for fifteen years and they pay you that money for five years. So if your power production is off from your engineering documents that are submitted, you're, you're not gonna receive the full amount of funds that you thought you were. So that's one of the big reasons why we make sure we do it the way we do it. So that you're not on the hook for extra money that you were told and you're, you never have to be.
One last thing was that everybody's concerns about this project or whatever. I had spoke at the pre-agenda meeting about having Joe come here and I think this city attorney feared and I had thought that the best solution to some of these problems would be just to convene a special study or utility study on something to continue this matter off council time in a setting where we could invite Jamie or Joe back to something or whoever else to discuss something like what it would cost besides a power purchasing agreement, how much does solar cost outright just for us to be divine setting up? I mean, is that something we wanna look at? I know that there's a lot of things that it entails and dumping it all on us right now is a big load, so something like a committee.
Committee meetings like.
Meeting, studying this exact.
I think we do that, but I honestly don't know why we're not asking for the paperwork right now. I mean, but it's not like we have to pay any money.
No, that's.
If nothing else, we're just gonna make them do a bunch of work that you're away.
My, my question was, was how's a too good to be true proposal actually real and what are the negatives?
We can't, we're not in a position to do that. When we're talking about the wastewater treatment plant, we're not in a position to do that right now.
But Jamie can talk about other facilities.
Right, but he's not ready.
Yeah, that's fine, I can come back more.
Can't be ready to go into the evaluation.
But I mean, this is something we can figure out in the next two months. I mean, it's just.
Right.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's an engineering math problem, it's not like.
Yeah, and I can plan.
And he's, he's been in conversation with Ben.
I think what Brandon was suggesting is that this is very informative and very helpful. But it would be nice perhaps have Jamie and Ike come and talk to special studies about this. Not against you, but in a setting where it's just council members and whoever else that's there and explore what possibilities there are and then decide which direction you can go forward.
And the other, I mean, what do I know about the numbers? I mean, Jamie can figure that out too, this is more an engineering problem, that. So why don't we just have Jamie to come back like next meeting?
I think what we're suggesting is not do that at a council, we're stumped for time and running hats. Set it as a special study, maybe you can run that thing as long as you want. There's a discussion, I don't have an arbitrary cutoff time when you have to stop.
And invite who you want.
I would be willing to be here till ten o'clock at night for a month, stay there a couple of days.
Then move into special, into a session to do that, so we're not running late.
We are all for that.
So call me, just call a special study, you mean, and invite the folks who wanna come to.
I'm all for that.
I so call one.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Yo, we gotta, we gotta go.
Thank you. Thank you guys very much for your time.
Thank you.